Good evening, it's five thirty-two and I would like to bring the meeting of our school board. On. We have a fairly wide agenda tonight, but we'll just see how it plays out. Welcome to our teachers and guests and SEU and anybody online yet.
Yes, we do have two people.
First, I will read the public comment procedure for us. Uh, we will take public comments tonight from our virtual audience. If you do wish to speak during the public comment session, we will allow in-person guests to speak for three minutes first. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we will then open it up for virtual speakers on Zoom. In order to speak, please do the following: raise your virtual hand, enter your full name in your avatar profile. When speaking, turn your camera on and say your full name and the town of residence. And when these are complete, you will also have three minutes to speak. And with that, we will move to the consent agenda. Which tonight is just one element, which is the minute, draft minutes from our November ninth meeting. So do my fellow board members have any questions, comments, or action items on the minutes? If not, no, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda and the draft minutes.
I'll make that motion on second.
Motion by Ms. Lawrence, second by Ms. Hinkley, all in favor. Um, and I should note to the public listening that Mr. Torres is gonna be late, he'll be here in about twenty-five minutes. Work commitments. And Mr. Stokachew is not here tonight. And we have not heard.
There was an updated agenda, including the teacher presentations.
You opened up a little time.
So at five thirty-four, thank you, Ms. Lawrence, we will open up our first of two public input. Do we have anybody? And Mr. Chamberlain, do we have anybody with their Lawrence brand on virtual?
We did not, sir.
Alright, so uh, we will move on and we have a presentation tonight and Michael, I'm gonna let you introduce or. Just let Whitehead introduce, because I don't have it in front of me, because I've got the wrong agenda pulled up, and I apologize for that, and to you folks.
Yeah, so thank you. Um, so it's a pleasure tonight to introduce, or it's many of you know Lori Meter. Lori Meter is our speech path here at the school. Um, I will just say now in my third year working with Lori, um, it is a true pleasure to work with Lori. If you know Lori, uh, and I know many of you do, uh, her work speaks for itself. Uh, she has a reputation in our community as, uh, not only incredible but outstanding in her job. Um, and uh, just her team player mentality, her positivity. Um, she doesn't like attention, but she underneath it, uh, the radar, she uh, is always looking to recognize students for their growth, for their um, just little wins every day. Um, and so I appreciate Lori's work every day. So this is a first, I think. Lori, have you ever presented to the board before? I, I, maybe?
Working with student council.
It's been a while, it's been a while. So as part of our presentations, um, I think it's important that, uh, we started the year with, uh, an old video of the New England Patriots uh, being introduced as a team, you might recall, some of you might have been younger, but um, back in twenty-oh-one, they were introduced for the first time. I don't know if I ever said this up here, this is how we kick off our year here at MBBS. Uh, they were introduced for the first time a Super Bowl team was ever introduced as a team, not as like the captain leading the way. And um, so we talked as a staff about how uh, we, we do things as a team, we're all important in our roles. Um, in Lori's role as our speech path, as I said, she's outstanding. Uh, but I think it's important for you to see some of the work that she's doing uh, as a part of our team and uh, the important work she's doing with, with students, not only here but preschool students that come in. So uh, turn it over Lori, thank you.
Okay, well, um, our speech team has, it's myself and Michaela George has started this year. Um, I had to turn the preschoolers over to someone and she is responsible for about ten preschoolers. She works here on a part-time basis. Um, sad to give them away, but they are in good hands and I'll get them, a lot of them next year. And I have about uh, forty-two school-age kids that I'm work with, um, so some of them are every week and some of them are maybe once a month and some of them are just councils, so. And if you don't know, to become a speech therapist, you need to get a master's degree from accredited college and then you have to get certified by the national organization. And then also get approved to get a state license. And we have to maintain those through um, continuing education, just like a teacher. And uh, speech therapists, our spoken practice is pretty huge, but um, as a school speech therapist, the speech impairments we work with need to have an educational impact. Um, if they're, they have, a student might have a, a speech disability and it doesn't impact them academically, um, that's a great place to go, get services in a private practice. So um, our job here in the school is to, to help them get everything they can out of their school day and overcome any speech and language disability they might have. Um, these are some of the things, um, areas that we might work with. Um, today I'm just gonna talk about social communication. Um, just a broad area, there's many things you can do, I'm just gonna kind of touch a little bit on some things that I do. What kind of things that would impact their school day, what the social communication does set would be friendships that with their classmates, relationships with their teachers, collaboration, there's a lot of group work. Um, a lot of collaboration, even in kindergarten playtime. Um, any group work, group assignments they have to do, um, conflict resolution, could be in the hallways, could be at lunch, could be at recess. Um, just all those different things, even in group work, they have to have a conflict resolution. You know, who's gonna do what, what's important, what topic are we gonna work on? There's all compromising that needs to go on. So those are some areas that would impact their school day. Um, different ways to work on it, uh, video modeling is showing a video and slowing it down, stopping it, talking about it, discussing it. Um, role-playing, social stories, books, um, in social groups, we look at a lot of photos. We can play games and um, then um, process, um, social situations, uh, with social mapping, which I'll talk a little bit about later. Uh, social video, uh, video modeling is such a great way for the kids to learn. It would take hours to find something on YouTube. It was appropriate, it didn't have some weird advertisements and then Everyday Speech came out and this has um, a whole uh, social communication curriculum, everything from play skills all the way down to job training. Um, it's from pre-K all the way to high school, um, it has videos and social lessons, um, games, worksheets, homework. Um, and I'm just gonna, it has saved me so much time, um. One thing I might work on as a social communication skills is, you know, what it takes to lead a person's mood. So I'll just kind of show a little, little bit about when I looked that up on Everyday Speech, what I might come up with. Maybe there. So we're gonna have a video. So the video, it kind of goes through like a little lesson, but the part I like is it goes to a school situation. So.
Not too good.
Oh, what happened?
I'll tell you later.
Did you get your black belt?
No, I didn't.
It seems like Jordan didn't want to talk about his karate tournament, but Rachel kept asking him about.
So you can see how that works, like I can even stop it and be like, oh my gosh, and I look at his shoulders and his head and should you keep that topic going or is it time for a topic change? Um, so we can stop and talk about that and then after this video, they played the video again where she would read his thoughts and then it would be a better scenario. Um, and then we can go on and we can role-play this ourselves, we can um, change little things. But what I like about it is it's all, all these little videos are appropriate and they're in the school environment. It's exactly the kind of things that I need to focus on to help them do better in school. Um, and just for example, this, you go down here, you know, I have another lesson, um, there's some practice, another video, and then there's a quiz show game. So that has been a fantastic program and I laugh because it's called Everyday Speech and I really do use it every day. Um, then there's just books I use, I have some clinical books that tell me, you know, things that I need to know. I might have a little worksheets in them. Um, just regular storybooks. Um, there's this game, the American Girl doll has a what would you do book, very good. Teamwork isn't my thing and I don't like to share. That's a good book, um, my mouth is a volcano for the kids that learn things out. I have fifty or hundreds of different books to kind of help bring the point across and teach different things. Um, pictures we use a lot in um, our social story. So what I start out doing is I'll show them a picture like this and I'm like, what are you seeing? And they were like, oh, he's in pain, he's angry. Um, and someone's like, he's blind. But then, um, then I, then I showed them this picture and I'd be like, oh wow, would you have ever said that guy's happy? I said, you know, sometimes when people are, you know, athletes especially, they get, they're all hyped up and when they're happy, that's a happy face. You know, I said, why would he be happy? I'm like, you gotta get the whole picture and the whole situation, you can't just look at someone's face. You have to take everything into account and it comes into a different story. I probably have about fifty pictures of just the face and then you blow it up and it's like, oh, and it was something different. So just to kind of help them know that you have to take everything to, um, in perspective. Um, that picture will, will do something, like I'll put a picture on the table and we each have a thinking bubble and I'd be like, what are they thinking? This picture, one kid said, oh, I, um, oh no, I'm getting punished, I got caught. And then another kid said, oh, I'm so scared, I don't like it, I'm afraid of heights. And then the third kid's like, we, I'm having the time of my life. And so I talked about like, all three of those are correct answers, like we don't know exactly what he's thinking and we could kind of talk about his facial expression a little more to see like if it's in one way or another. But none of those I thought were a wrong answer, so. The same situation, I said, three different perspectives, so kind of talking about getting every angle. Um, uh, games, we do play games in speech. Example, um, taking other people's perspective again, I have this game called Blank Slate. Um, they each get a dry erase board and they have to finish a, a, a word. It's so like, for example, they would say, have a line and say blank house and then I might go, so somebody might write brick house and then dog house, haunted house, bull house. And if you match somebody else's answer, you get a point. So you wanna write something that you think, what would he write, you know? And I had these two guys in recently and they knew a lot of video games, um, terms. So I wasn't getting any points and they were matching each other a lot. So as I could, they were getting each other's perspective. They knew what each other would write. Weren't too sure what I would write, but a lot of times I'll have kids try to write something unique and I'm like, yeah, that's not the point of the game, you wanna think about what they might write. And this is another one that's kind of like that taking called Double Lido. Dangerous jobs, it has a little, something you have to write members of a category. Dangerous jobs is one of, um, things that go on your head. Again, you get points for matching answers with your classmates. Um, so if they're playing with someone who they know is interested in certain topics, how much do you know about that person, what would they write? So, um, just some of those perspective-taking games. Um, there's another one called Priorities. We have a list of things and you have to take the list and arrange it, like I'm gonna arrange according to how I think you would prioritize it and, and then you, how you would prioritize it. So you have to guess how they would prioritize things, you get points for getting certain things in the right order. So some perspective-taking games, they're all kind of fun and these games, um, I use them, but um, Anna Gerard, our school counselor, comes in and borrows them too. She works on a lot of the similar things. Um, social stories usually address a certain issue, um, or, or try to familiarize kids with things. I always do one for, um, fire drills, um, asking to leave to go to the bathroom, um, how to approach a group and ask to play, it could be anything. Um, sometimes I buy them pre-made, other times I'll make my own so I can put the kid's name in it or, or exactly, you know, if it involves another student, exactly, you know, what's going on specific to them. I just had a quick little example of one that's called Ask Before Leaving the Room that I made for somebody who, uh, needed to check in with his teacher before he left to go in the bathroom. So it's just really short and to the point, staff ask before leaving the room. And just letting them know the teacher is in charge of the classrooms. Keep the students safe, she needs to know where everybody's at. There's times you wanna leave the classroom, might wanna go to the nurse. But you need to check in with your teacher first. You might wanna go to the bathroom, but you need to check your, in with your teacher first, because she needs to know where you're at. And you might wanna go to the library and get a book, but you need to check in with your teacher first, because she needs to know you're safe. Um, you might wanna leave the room, but if you don't tell your teacher, she won't know where you're at and she won't know you're safe. So first tell your teacher where you're going, then you can go where you wanna go. Um, the teacher needs to know where you're at, thinking you're safe. So mostly all positive statements are in social stories, so um, I have multiple of those. Um, I have something called the Social Detective Mailbox. I tell the kids that somebody, social detectives out in our school looking for people who are doing things that are socially confusing, he needs to know like what's going on. So they'll check the mailbox and they might do a little note in their form. And this one says, oh, I saw a student running to the bus and they cut everyone in line. So that gives us a discussion to talk about. A lot of times this note is written about someone in that particular group and sometimes they fess up and they're like, oh, that's me. And other times they just quietly learn with everyone else what we talked about in the situation. And a lot of times we'll talk about the situations in the social detective box. We'll use, uh, it's called social mapping. We talk about, you know, the unexpected behavior, running to the front and cutting. How did it make all the other kids feel? Well, they felt annoyed because they don't like to be cut. And um, the person running, the teacher running the bus, if he doesn't like children running ahead and cutting and starting a ruckus, the consequence is usually you have to go to the back of the line for running ahead and cutting. And how does that make you feel? Well, that's not what I wanted, that makes me kind of sad. So then on the other side of this paper is the flip side, what's the expected thing you do? Just go and line up and get in line, get on the bus. You know, just in the place of line that you're supposed to be. And that makes everybody around you happy, who say, oh, they're just smoothly going to the bus. The consequence is you get on the bus, you go home, there's no trouble, no difficulty and you feel pretty good because you think it's set to the back of the line. So many of these different situations come in the social detective lots. Um, and you know, you can talk about social communication and then help prepare them for situations. You can't prepare them for the many of situations socially that could happen, so a lot of times we'll talk about like, if you know, it was like, ooh, like that didn't work out the way I wanted, a social, um, breakdown. You know, like how do you recover from that? So we talk about many different strategies to, you know, recover from that and maintain your friendships and your working relationships with your classmates. Um, and one of the ones we really work on is just how to give a good sincere meaningful apology is one of the first places to start. Um, and everyone, I work on social communication, but the school counselor does, case managers do, occupational therapy helps, they throw a lot of ideas, bounce a lot of ideas and make a lot of plans with the people on the left, the people on the right, the ones in the forefront, the teachers are the ones who are doing the things in the classrooms and the parent professionals as well. Parents get on board and it makes it even better. Um, everyone helps with social communications, happens all the time, all day long. And um, it takes, you know, a lot of work to get all this stuff together and think about each kid individually to make a connection with them of, to improve their social communication. But I just wanted to share a story. I went to South Heagan High School with Carol, we're gonna watch a former student who was in a play. Danny wanted to go in and I'm looking at this bulletin board that lists the kids in the student government and um, community council. And I'm like, wow, these are some of my old kids. And I'm like, look at them, put themselves out there and improved work and the, you know, the this kind of work and it was a really, made me feel really good to see them do their best after here. I know when they leave here, the middle school and high school have great staff. And it was, continued to give them support and that's where they ended up, so it's a really good feeling. Anybody have any questions?
Do you touch all students or, or are they strictly students that, uh, are facing some challenges?
Uh, I have, um, students, I work with students on IEPs and uh, five oh four, so they've been identified with a disability, but then we do have a volunteer service support system here. So sometimes I do work with other kids who are not formally identified, but maybe they're struggling. Their teacher's like, hey, they're really having trouble with group work, so I might work with them for a little bit. I had one student who was, he just blurted out a lot, so he only came to my social sessions um, for his grade level when I was talking about blurting, blurting out. So there are some kids that come in for just like little short periods that just need a little boost in a certain social communication area. Yeah, everybody could probably just work in social communication, we need my
Two things that stand out for me, uh, one is Lori just glossed over it, but it was, uh, important is MTSS. And Lori is a critical member of our Falcon Support Team here, which is for all intents and purposes, sort of an MTSS team. Um, and she provides a lot of just wisdom and knowledge and experience to that team. Um, so I appreciate that, I appreciate how she knows all our kids, all our kids know Ms. Meter. Um, the other thing that I've seen Lori do really well is, um, she has groups, she has lunch groups, which are very popular, super popular. And she will pull in other students to be, I think she's intentionally using that as a sort of a model, a social model, but I've seen that and I hear kids talking about the lunches and um, I mean, she's a, she's a fairly smallage office and, um, it's pretty, pretty packed and popular during some of those lunches, so I appreciate how she, she is really well known throughout the, the MBBS community, so. Fun to watch.
It's fun, fun to work here.
So the Detective Mailbox, that's real-life issues that kids here have.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes I put made-up stuff.
Stuff a little bit, yeah.
But usually it's like if a teacher or someone mentions to you something in the hall, like
I love it.
It's instead of me saying, oh, yeah, your teacher told me you did this, the social detective thought it worked better, so.
Yeah, you do observations at lunch, like recess, I, I think a lot of this, like recess would be powerful.
Yeah, I just got put on recess duty and I said, nobody probably asked you to be put on recess duty.
The first time, yeah, especially in that December. So much social interactions there, right? I mean, I think it would be like very fruitful.
Yeah, I feel like I have a list, and then a list of kids I wanna check them and see what they're up to. You know, because you ask them, how was your recess? Fine. I bet it was fine, so you know, it's, it's good.
Love it, great work. Question, uh, something I've been wondering for a while. Students get recommended to you, is that true?
Yeah, a teacher might say something to me.
So before you start working with a student, do you consult the parents? Do you have to get sign-off or is that optional?
For me, I always, um, I always give permission from the parents unless it's something like a, a student wants to invite a friend on a one-off, like it's just coming to my room for lunch, you know? You know, but if it starts to being like, oh, you're always inviting that friend and they kind of fit here, I'll, I'll contact the parent or have the teacher contact the parent.
Okay. If the parent says no, then you just don't work with the child?
No, yeah, and I'll be like, I mean, I, well, I guess I've had one parent who didn't want their kid to come, but, um, and that's down eleven years, so most of the parents are fine with it, so.
Thank you, appreciate the presentation. Thanks Lori. Okay, next up, uh, we'll segue right back to Ms. Lighter for the principal's report.
Yeah, so, um, sure you read the report, but I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights, uh. Today I was called down to the art room to check out the new pottery that will actually be highlighted in the newsletter this week. Um, the kiln is running and, uh, it's like glossy ornaments and things like that, that I still have one of the, I think the candy cane I made when I was in elementary. We're gonna have to glue it back together, but nonetheless, it's still alive. Um, so there's some, some good stuff coming out of there and I just wanna thank our, our art teacher, Ms. Christie, for, uh, doing a great job getting that up and running and thank you for your support. I know we talked about the kiln for a while, uh, but it's great to see it in use. Uh, just real quick, I wanted to recognize the work yesterday, uh, early release. There's a lot packed into those two, two and a half hours, but yesterday, uh, we had, I think after a little warm-up with some trivia, movie trivia thing, it was, you know? I didn't do as well as I thought I would, actually on that, but, um, we got into a conversation around goals and, uh, we're getting into that point in the year where we're nearing our halfway point, just sort of, uh, rekindling um, where our, where we're going. Uh, what our priorities are, what our focus areas are, how, how we're doing on our action steps. Um, and I just wanna thank the staff for, uh, taking that really seriously, um, giving some really good feedback, lows and groves. We called it, lows and groves. Um, and so we're, uh, we're working through some of the feedback, um, and I will tell you for our three main goals, the math, reading and SEL goals, um, I would say Carol was there and Lori was there, um, it was ma- many, many globes, many, many globes. Uh, but also some real honest constructive feedback as well, so, um, that's always good. So I wanted to recognize that, then we had some other work after that yesterday. Shout out to our PTA, biggest event of the year is Winter Wonderland. Uh, we had a huge turnout, huge, huge, huge turnout, um, great family, community event and, uh, a lot of planning, a lot of work goes into that. Uh, they're here Friday night setting up, can only imagine, and then they're Sunday taking, taking it down. Um, just a really fun event and, and a lot of good feedback from the families. Uh, one of our goals is around reading, is around just cha- just uh, championing reading and creating a, a reading vibe around the school. And one of the things that we've done and will do, and we're freshening it up a little bit, thank you to Patty Garrity, our, uh, our librarian and then Maggie Home is, is, uh, working with her, is Bookopoly, pray heard if your kids have come home with, with books. Uh, it's sort of a gamey way to incentivize reading. And so we're kicking that off in January. Actually, as you walk out, if you look to the right, you'll see the Bookopoly board is now posted, that will be in the newsletter on Friday, but we're excited about that. Um, just on a fun note, flag football, thank you for supporting the co-curricular. Um, it was one of the more popular co-curriculums we've had in some time. Scott Sosier, our bizet teacher ran a flag football league-ish kind of a thing, uh, for a few weeks. I was actually, the Patriots are looking for a quarterback, so I went out there, felt pretty good, um, I, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Um, but that, it was fun, Scott did a great job, we had over forty-five kids out there and, uh, a number of staff just volunteered to go help out, um, because we have so many students, so thank you for your support of that, shout out to Scott and a really, a really good program. Um, and then lastly, I think I mentioned that we had a representative from, uh, responsive classroom, the center of responsive classroom come out and give us some feedback. She was here for a day, um, and gave us some, some feedback. Uh, I presented that at our staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was, it was really interesting to hear, uh, so much positive feedback, which honestly, we expected you kind of aware that was gonna land, um, but also some good constructive, uh, feedback um, that we will work, um, work through in January, um, at our early release, so, um, very productive day, uh, and she spent the whole day here. She was all over our school, uh, classrooms, lunch, recess, everywhere. Um, so that was, that was a really productive day and Um, so that was, that was a really productive day and to our SEL, one of our SEL goals is around the responsive strategies. That we're um, using every day with kids, so thank you.
Questions, comments? PTA tree rocked in the litter of Wonderland.
Oh, isn't that our tree?
Of course.
Yeah, so, and I did wanna shout out to, uh, yeah, the, the, the board. We had a number of trees from the community, including the library, the police, fire departments, um, Girl Scouts, a lot of groups on top. So uh, it was a, it was a great event. Some very happy raffle winners still.
I was intrigued by the uh, the lottery one.
I didn't scratch media. I didn't get the results, uh, yeah.
Next up, do we have any uh, additional comments on the other to the middle school report or the facilities report? Questions or comments from? Members here, anything from?
Can I actually ask a question about middle school? Tom, do you get any sort of updates from Kristen about how our? Kids up there during our seventh graders? Like, do you guys have any?
Actically, in generals.
Just in general.
In general, yeah, we have conversations. Um, we do, we do, we and uh. You know, Christina and I talk to and, and talk about, you know, various data points and um, just basic transition stuff. The plan Anna Gerard and the counselors um, at AMS are working on for different events that really start when we turn over the calendar. Into twenty-four, we're getting into some of that. Um, I think one of the things that I've noticed. Especially since Kristen, and I know there's an intentionality around starting that transition around social opportunities for kids. In my newsletter and I think it was in the, um, in the report, uh, just inviting kids to the dances and including them. And some of those things being intentional about that. Um, I think that has gone a long way for our kids and the turnout's been really good with our kids. So yeah, we are, we are, and I see Kristen.
Yeah.
At least every other week at our meetings, so we, we are ongoing conversations, so. Once a middle schooler, always a middle schooler, you know, so I can relate to a lot of her, uh, her work, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
We may, uh, just an invite, like Kristen, maybe come to one of our meetings. We give us enough.
Yeah, she'd love to.
Yeah, I think she's been here before.
Yeah, and transition is always a good, they're starting to plan.
Yeah, so just, you know. On our agenda tonight is uh, staff resignation and also hand in hand with the nominations, so segue to.
Yes, so uh, so we're gonna try to do two things. Uh, tonight, we, we do need to accept the resignations. Unfortunately, in, in the middle of the year and with a great kind of regret of uh. Teacher, Laura Oberst, and um, so would it like us to accept that, you know, resignation?
We wanna, I think we need a motion and a, and a vote on that, so maybe we can work on the motion.
I will make the motion to accept uh, the resignation with regret.
Second, all in favor? Unfortunately passes by method.
Alright, but then in a unique situation, uh, we have a nomination on, on the same evening, which we're uh, very lucky. Uh, that we had extremely talented educator on staff in the position of a professional. Who went through the interview process here and uh, so we'd like to nominate. Eric Zenski as a, as a, as a replacement of Laura Oberst as grade four teacher. Pretty excited.
I will make the motion to accept the nomination of Kara.
Oh, sorry.
Want to have any discussion or are we just gonna? Ask, do we, we discuss why she's resigned?
Yeah, yeah, her family's relocation. Um, husband had a professional opportunity in another city. And so that required a resignation and uh, so a little common. You know, for the middle of the year, when something like that happens, and so I'm always gonna support that. And uh, I turned the page and are excited about Kara filling in. Had a great conversation uh, with her the, the other day and as we come talking a bit about it.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. So first I wanna thank Laura. Um, it's been a pleasure to work with Laura for three years. Um, you're not gonna find a more student-centered um, educator. She cares about her kids. I mean, she's the teacher that lays awake at night worrying about their math scores or, you know, um. Uh, whatever the case may be. I mean, she truly, truly, her heart is with those kids. Um, it's been very bittersweet for her. It's been emotional. She's, she does not wanna leave us, you know, I can tell you that. Uh, but at the same time, like Mike said, it's an opportunity uh, for her family, so bittersweet, but um, it's one of those, one of those things. So um, and then on the other side of this, as, as Mike said, um, we have incredible opportunity. Um, and uh, it's, it is unique um, to have a, an educator of Kara's caliber. Uh, to accept the position. Um, she has a, a ton of talent and skill and experience. Um, everything from classroom teaching to math specialist to uh, not coach. And uh, a lot of good work. She relocated from Connecticut several years ago and uh, worked in a high caliber district down in Connecticut. And um, did a lot of good work down there. So we are fortunate to have Kara on our staff and uh. You know, I, I feel like Kara has served long-term positions, like did last year. Um, I feel like this will be as seamless as, as uh, it possibly could be, um, which is reassuring, obviously for our kids and families. And um, I don't think we could be in a better place for the situation that we're in in December, so.
Will there need to be a backfill for Kara's previous position?
So that'll be stepped after tonight, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My only question is there's, obviously there's a difference in salary, so given what we're operating under. How are we gonna, my math is seventeen thousand, how are we gonna, how are we gonna pay for half a year? Yeah, right, but still.
Yeah, we have some uh, ways that we can cover.
Yeah, there were some savings in uh, tuition to the Amherst Middle School, so what we budgeted for was more than what we're actually meaning to pay. So that's where the money will come from, so.
Right, your honor, as always, just, there's, there's a difference, that's all, right?
And we're adjusting the budget for next year. For this position.
Probably we open higher.
So this is just to fill for this year?
You went full time for it? You, you went full time?
Yeah, so no, yeah, so this is a.
So for, yeah, clarify that for me, is it for this year or?
No, this is a hire, so this is like any other hire. So we hired, you know, Kara, yep, no, we hired Kara. And so when we go to the renomination period, you know, like she's gonna go through the evaluation process and. And then, you know, we'll go through the nomination for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And if we have to make some adjustments to, I think we'll work with Amy, you know.
That's a good point.
So am I hearing that we're not adjusting the budget now to, like, this is a known? So we're not gonna adjust the budget for that? As much as I don't like that there will be an increase, feels disingenuous not to do it if it's a known. She sounds great, so I wouldn't anticipate that something's gonna go horribly wrong in the next few months. My, do you see my point?
No, I, I do see it and uh, and we'll have to uh, likely adjust the budget to, to do this. You know, we haven't done it at this point because she wasn't nominated.
Okay.
So it sounds like to me you'll be trying to carry efficiencies, maybe not in this position, but you may see in other roles. To kind of make up the difference is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and what we'll do, it will be truly, you know, conservative, as, you know, as we've developed a lot of things here, you know. What we wanted to nominate for this year, yeah, and figure out how to move forward for next year, but it's real important, yeah, you know.
Well, I think it'll just inform our budget discussion a little bit later this evening.
So at this point, we'll take a vote and all in favor of Kara to be hired as a fourth grade teacher? But nothing, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Doesn't have to be right away. We'd love to meet her at some meeting down, down the road.
Yeah, she would love to come.
She would, awesome. Next up, I believe. Financial star of our show.
Budget mania?
This is basically with the uh, draft three for our budgets.
Alright, so Steve will put it on the screen and I did share it with all of you a few minutes ago, so you should have it.
Feel good about that?
I am. You can do the next slide, budget review, and then go to the next slide. So this just had the changes from draft two to draft three, um, not a whole heck of a lot. Uh, we adjusted the transportation amount, given that we have um. Uh, new projections from NASDAQ, so that increased um, by three thousand two eighty-three. The SEO assessment, if you remember, was based on enrollment. I didn't have the average daily membership in attendance, so that helped us. Um, so that decreased by six, seven, four, nine, and then just some small miscellaneous changes. We fine tuned the um, the Amherst Middle School tuition amount. So the net change is a decrease of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So did the average, did it go down?
Or. So it, it went up for transportation, but the ADMA is a different calculation than enrollment.
Okay.
So it's kind of a complicated calculation that the D E does for us. So the best number I had was enrollment, but it, it was actually.
You were considering that, some nice little pickup.
Yeah, so, so that worked out.
Nice.
Alright, um, and then, so the percentages haven't um, changed. We're still at a total five point nine percent increase from FY twenty-four operating budget to FY twenty-five proposed. Uh, of that, the change from the operating budget, FY twenty-four operating budget to FY twenty-five default is four point two percent. And then the change um, from the default to the proposed is the one point seven percent. And that's the amount that uh, the board has that discretion over. Uh, I won't bore you with budget assumptions and drivers. Nothing's changed since the last presentation. And not a lot changed in the default calculation. Um, just the adjustment to the SEO apportionment. So the total change uh, from the twenty-four budget to default is that four point two percent. Uh, the proposed budget, so again, nothing much changed from last time, just uh, the transportation went up a little bit. Uh, so the total change is the one point seven percent. Going, uh, this is just a budget comparison by fund. I do think it's important this year to, to make the point that. Um, while the total budget is increasing uh, by five point nine percent, point four percent of that is offset by revenue. Um, from food service and grants, so the general fund is increasing actually by five point five percent. So I think that'll be an important point to make uh, during public hearing and deliver it. Alright, so this is the same slide as well for the facilities funding plan, so we'll go through that. Keep going, uh, capital reserve fund is the same. I did um. Want to have the board, invite the board to have a discussion on the order of the. Warrant articles for the um, for the funds. So just keep that in mind, we'll get to that, but they are funded in order um, based on available. On the time fund balance, so it's something that you'll wanna consider tonight. So this is new information, uh, we're gonna talk about revenues. Wanna go to the next slide? So we calculate the revenue that offsets the expense side of the budget. Uh, by looking at food service revenue, and as you know, food service really operates its own business, so we. Um, have expenses and we uh, project that we're gonna take in the revenue to offset all of the. Doesn't always work out that way, but that's the goal. Um, so in this case, the food service budget has increased, so, so has the food service. Uh, revenue budget, we did budget for uh, a potential transfer of fifteen thousand dollars. In the general fund to offset um, any shortfalls in the food service line. So we don't always do that, but with this increase in the food service budget, felt it was especially important to keep that. Uh, transfer in the general fund. Uh, grants are also increasing, no worries there. That's money that we uh, we project to get and um, we'll only spend what we get, but that is um. That is our, our grant funds, but that is off, that is, will be offset by revenue. Um, there's other federal, state and local funds that come in. We're looking to project that to be essentially flat, just up a little bit. Uh, interest income is up a little bit more, so we're uh, projecting a small increase there. Uh, there was one other item for um, uh, funds we received for a student who goes to a charter school. Seeing that that's student dependent, we don't like to definitely uh, project for that in, income to come in. Uh, so for the voted from fund balance, those are the warrant articles. So as you know, for this year, um, there were uh, funds came from the. Prior year fund balance to cover a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the warrant articles. And what is being proposed for FY twenty-five is a hundred and ten thousand in warrant articles, so that's twenty thousand dollars. Less required uh, to fund the warrant articles. We're projecting uh, to offset the tax rate with a, with an amount of a hundred and fifty. So looking at history over the last five years or so and looking to be conservative. We're keeping the total amount coming from fund balance to be flat with what we had projected for this year. Um, so it's, it's really a flat number between the voted for fund balance and fund balance of offset tax rate. That money comes from the same place, that's just the outside of that balance uh, from FY twenty-four. So with all of those changes, uh, we're actually seeing an increase in revenues projected for FY twenty-five. Uh, mostly from the, the grants and the food service. So we went from five ten two ninety-five for this year to five thirty-three nine seventy-one.
So maybe just real quick, so that was about a ten percent jump in the revenues of food services.
Yeah.
Is that because we're now charging those individuals? Cause I remember last year. Coming out of COVID, we had a lot of.
Yep.
Free lunches, I think.
It's an increase in the expense, so it's just, we, we project what we think the um. What we need for food service and then it's fully offset by revenue.
Oh, okay.
Not, then that's why.
Short fall, okay, got it.
Yeah.
So that's really based upon if we cover those expenses, unfortunately, we're seeing, we're seeing.
Yeah, if we don't, we do have a fifteen thousand, like I wouldn't recommend this year not budgeting for that fifteen thousand. Yeah, because we have an increase.
Okay. Is there food service reserve in that?
Um, there's, there is, we needed to use some of that last year to cut out the shortfall. Yes. Yeah. Alright, next slide.
Thank you.
Sure.
So real quick. So real quick, the fifteen transfer, if we don't use it or need it. Where does it go? Comes back to the unassigned fund balance.
All right, so.
Are we planning on any warrant articles besides ones that are redirecting the unassigned fund balance? Anything where we're looking for more money from the town?
All right, so this slide is going to, um, eventually give us a projected tax rate impact. So the impact is really the change from the current year to the projected year. So we take a look at the total appropriation from year to year, which is, uh, the budget and all warrant articles. So last year, uh, that, that's the, the full budget, which actually includes the, the hundred and thirty thousand. In warrant articles, this year it's the operating budget plus the hundred and ten that's being proposed in warrant articles. So the difference between those two, the total appropriation is three forty-nine, five thirty-one. Then we're going to back out any revenue, um, and the five thirty-three nine seventy-one is just from the slide before. And, um, you can see the F Y twenty-four revenue, so we're, uh, projecting an increase in revenue of twenty-three, six seventy-six. And we also receive, um, adequacy aid from the state. So the F Y twenty-four number is an actual number that, um, we received. This year when we were setting the tax rate for the current year, um, as well as the statewide property tax, so those numbers are. Are, um, are real numbers and the tax effort, um, that is listed there is also the real number for, um, Mont Vernon. Uh, for F Y twenty-five, we receive a projected amount for adequacy and a projected amount. For statewide property tax from the Department of Education, so those are the numbers that we use for right now. And then those will become the actual numbers, uh, in the fall.
And that's formulated, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have no control over that, they just tell us what, they give us an estimate now and they tell us the actuals.
It's good to hear, because we, we pay into the statewide property and it's kind of, we know what we're paying into. So it's good to hear, at least that's going to.
Why, why is that number going down?
So which one?
The statewide property tax, what would cause that to go down?
It's, it's, you can chime in, but it's a.
So it's, it's in combination with adequacy, it's a sum and it's, it's raised here, stays here. So it's just because your overall revenue went up, your state, your statewide property taxes.
So between the two that we received were, were up about four thousand or so. In the adequacy and statewide property. Um, so the total tax effort, um, because we had some additional revenue. Uh, is lower than the, the total appropriation, the difference between the appropriation, the total appropriation amounts, so. Um, so the total tax effort difference between the two years is three twenty-one, seven fifty-four. And then to calculate the tax impact, you just divide that by the valuation. From the town, and so that amount is ninety-seven cents, so.
How does that compare to last year, do you recall?
So, yes, here's last year. Yeah. Well, so last year, um. Yes, but it was actually default, so it was, the estimate was a dollar fifty-eight for Mount Vernon. Um, for the Mount Vernon portion of Sohegan, it was twenty-two cents, so your total was a dollar eighty. That was what was estimated, what actually happened, mostly because the state increased the amount of adequacy aid, so. So everybody received more adequacy, so what actually happened is for Mount Vernon School District. Because the, uh, the demographics between the high school and the Mount Vernon School District shifted, so there were more. Students at Settlement Vernon students, so he can then projected and less students in Mount Vernon Village School then projected. The amount of adequacy that was predicted went down for the bill, for the district of Mount Vernon Village District. But it went up for Sohegan. Hope, hope I'm making sense, um, so what happened was the Mount Vernon actual tax impact went up. Um, and was greater than a dollar fifty-eight, it was a dollar seventy-three, but the Mount Vernon portion of Sohegan went down. It was estimated at twenty-two cents and it went down by thirty-nine cents. So the net result for the Mount Vernon taxpayer was a dollar thirty-four. As opposed to a dollar eight, so that. Was. People paid, uh, on an average, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifty dollars less than what was, what was predicted for that.
You're the best.
So we estimated conservatively, we got more money back from adequacy, so.
The apples, I'd look at the estimate before we went through. And seen that, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and what's hard is, this is Mount Vernon School District, but the tax bill is Mount Vernon School District. And the Mount Vernon portion of Sohegan, so when I first saw the adequacy numbers, I'll be honest, I panicked. And said, oh my goodness, why are they less than what you had, had predicted? And that was because there was a shift in the students, so the percentage changed. But the amount that was given back in adequacy to the Mount Vernon taxpayer was more. So what was predicted as a tax rate was one number, but what was actually the real tax rate that folks, you folks are paying. Is less than what we asked, which is what we want.
So. The tax impact appears lower this year, because the valuation of the town is higher.
And the valuation went up as well, so there were, there's quite a few things at play, but yes, the valuation did go up, so that helps. Back to the slide. So ninety-seven cents, that's where we are, um, all right, so this is a summary of the warrant articles and. Before we get to ac- actually the warrant articles where. It would be, um. Helpful to move them to the public hearing, um. You probably want to take a few minutes just to talk about the order of the, um. Of the fund warrant articles, because this is just, you know, administration has put this forth, it's a superintendent's budget, but it's up to you folks. To decide what order, uh, to put the warrant, because they will be funded in order.
But before we get there, um. I'm, I'm a back of the envelope guy. When, um, Mike and Amy showed me the, the signs, I was very happy that the tax rate was under a dollar. That was nice, right, that's nice. Back of the envelope, uh, changes tonight may raise that five, five to six cents.
It was not crunching, I think that's what it is. Did you see me feverishly crunching?
Amy knows I'm an ish person. So that would make it a dollar three, you give me an ish, I'm an ish. So. Is it, should we talk about that? Uh, because it was nice, it was nice, we, we, today we had some glee, there was a little bit of glee when it went to nine, when it went to point ninety-seven cents. Because it was point nine nine for a while, and so, oh, we got it, there was glee, there's less glee. So, um, we could, you, you know, we, we, the board's pleasure, I mean, tonight we're trying to get stuff, we have a public hearing. We don't, it's not finalizing the budget tonight, but it's finalizing what's going to be presented at public hearing, there's some revisions. So just want to make sure we're purposeful and deliberate, um, to look at, if there's, you know, to look at other, you know, just shaving, cutting this. You know, there was glee at point nine seven, but if the board is fine, dollars, right, dollars three, you and I are probably pretty close.
I'm the one would love to see it under a dollar.
Constituency getting under a dollar, I think mentally, that's even though you don't like to see your taxes go up. In comparison to last year, it's like, okay, we're making some headway here.
How much would you have to cut? A thousand, twelve thousand?
So I guess my, my quick math, the easy thought is we just take five thousand dollars off the beach of article three, four, five and six. And that gives a quick twenty thousand.
I'd like to talk about that, because. And I think I went through this in my head last year, that property maintenance fund, you know, have a hard time. Just think of that, you know, maintenance on a school. It, to me, it, it should be part of the budget as opposed to a separate warrant article, so I'm interested to see what's in that maintenance line.
So this is the, this is the plan, this is this. That's saving for planned large expenditures, which is fiduciary, that's your fiduciary.
Okay.
And we shaved it last year to cover for the sixty dollars, sixty thousand facility, so I would hate to, to shave it back.
Oh, no, no, I got you, so this is more long-term planning on capital projects as opposed to maintenance. And, and that's why I always have a trouble. Maintenance, maintenance, if we want to maintain, you know, a good school, then that's not the way to spend, then it's more, those are capital projects.
So, uh, one thing you could, you, you could do to get close to the dollar is. There's a technology fund of love twenty-five, but we, we could go to fifteen. And that'd be okay, and it's one thing that could happen, if there's more fund balance at the end of the year. We could spend some technology, that extra ten could come in technology, you with me? And so what you're doing is you're guaranteeing to the town is going to be this level, but if there's more. Then the board has, right, has expenditures being. And, um, you know, the health, very privileged, very grateful that the health and dental insurance, right, that was established last year. With fifteen, we could lower that to ten twenty-five, that's covers, you know, two, two-person of family switches. Covers one single to family switch that we don't know, so remember, it's great, that's wonderful. But fifteen to cover it, it gets us close to below and the technology doesn't, but you can't. The, the health and dental insurance, the under trip fund balance, we all of a sudden can't say, Steve, here's money, right, that's, that has to be allocated, the technology could. So that fifteen would just about cover, and you'd get close to underneath the dollar, which. Based on last year and, and last year I learned from Amy, uh, second year defaults aren't my favorite thing, so. If we can have a little bit of good news, talk about last year and say under a dollar, I think it's a value, more value than the fifteen here. Just throwing it out there, if, if my boss over the right and left, say we're okay. For this one, the boss over here has a little higher.
Under a dollar, go along, I think it would too, and I, I like pulling it from technology and not for property maintenance, it's better to be that last year.
That would give me some shit, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, looking at the balance there, I like keeping that where it is, yeah, uh, yeah, I like your, I like your proposal.
Ten, health insurance, health and dental, the funds would be ten, technology fund would be fifteen. And again, if we had ten thousand dollars more, we could buy some switches and we could do some stuff. Because you still have flexibility, this doesn't say that we have to expend it, uh, allocated budget, which isn't the worst thing in the tech world. I know, I, I really do believe, uh, Brian, or the. And all the discussions we've had with our technology.
So reading the motion, but, or could we just suggest that we. Do it.
Yeah, so we're going to move the warrant articles forward, so we'll just, I'm going to, we'll change them quickly.
You were suggesting twenty would start off, should we go all the way to twenty instead of fifteen? Which one, I'm sorry?
We're going to find twenty to cover the seven total, so I, I suggested twenty.
And if, if I, um, in a perfectly fine, I would take the five from special. Or. So then, then technology gives you, if you have the money anyway, you could buy it, but I'm not sure we're ready to buy fifteen K, but I, I don't want. Early obsolete stuff on the cap, just so we could take five from the special ed, because remember last year was the first time we deposited in files, that's good, so. I could, I could sleep, I could sleep at fifteen, ten, ten, fifteen, sorry, fifteen, ten.
Fifteen, ten and fifteen.
Yeah, I could sleep. Now where you're surely below the dollar, because I was a little ish on the seventeen. I trust your lack of ish than my ish.
You want to be lucky.
So I think, Pete, to, to your comment, uh, putting twenty to cover the entire, I think, is wisdom. Because that gets us at the ninety-seven.
Yeah, I like those numbers.
Yeah, I think we're okay, I don't think you're risking our, I don't think you're highlighting your fiduciary, I really don't. I appreciate you, was you picked up on that, like you said, we don't need a motion now, no, because you're going to.
I'd love for it to be flat, but I'm not going to get my wish, so.
I did that same, we just didn't, million, million dollars of revenue.
Let's just make it flat.
She didn't accept my advice.
So I have one other question, I'd love to make more work for you, but do you know what our insurance percent increase was for last year?
I do. Four point one?
It was just brought up last night.
So it's gone up seventeen percent.
It was negative the year before. And just, uh, remember. That it is hot, this is the guaranteed maximum rate, this is not the actual. In having an act of G M R up in the twenties gives you some shot that the actual will come in low, because it's revolving six-month periods. You're going to get a new six-month period and fill in for the six-month period, on the actual, they're pretty good at this stuff. Um, but what that would do then is that would give you fund balance.
I guess one of my thoughts is, is we present this is. As a sidebar, if, if the interest for the, uh, the increased rate on our insurance would say four one, just like it was this year. What would our budget be?
Yeah, it's a number that Amy will have for it. So for everyone, so I attended the budget committee for the town last night, um, they were. Uh, their question was, when you're in that rate, they, they both understood that insurance rates go up. And wanted to know if we had done anything about it, so I think it would be important to at least show or, or consider. Some, some action on attempting to change the. How the insurance rates, and I know we discussed it already, just relating that it was the one, one thing that there. Could or should take action on, never pay us, we're going to.
Yeah, I think we're more at a point where we have to explain it, we met at length with health, health, multiple terms, understand. How that number is that number, um, and, um, talked about some things that we're going to do to, to move forward. To educate our employees and, and, uh, and explain to. Public. Why we're at that position.
Can you just share what the limited options are, like, there's not a lot of market in, in the pool.
In a different environment than the town, I don't believe the town has any collective party. Not as many units, right, I don't think the police are needed. Pretty sure they're not, so there's a, one more year, next year, I believe, right, it's the third year of the agreement, so there'll be opportunity to. Work collaboratively and explore other options, uh, but there. Uh, but there, um, for public employee pooled, for this small community, you could never self-insure. You just couldn't, so you have to pool. And so the public sector pool is only for company. And the second most popular company, uh, would not. Uh, I, I think, but the company's, oh, we were really high over here, so another company would love to have you. Right, because it's all claims, so if your claims are up by a certain amount, which they were this year, no other company would take. Okay, because it would be passing off the risk in the cost to another company. Why would they, that's not in their best interest. So that's how that works, but next year we can negotiate plans, so do more of, of. Consumer-based, uh, plans and others. We're, we're collaborative.
Did they want you to share that back?
Uh, yeah, they, they wanted to, you know, they're basically saying, please go do something, go say something.
You're very limited. Yeah, I mean, part of, part of it is, you know, unless you start switching to high deductible plans. That's the only way you're gonna do it, that's the only way, we're in New Hampshire, very few providers. He was talking about claims. It's really on the claims below the pooling point, the pooling point they throw out. Anything below pooling point, let's say your pooling point's a hundred thousand dollars. So that means anybody who's saved who's going under cancer treatment, or has, you know. Cerebral palsy or something like that, those are high claims, they throw those out. They look at anything below a hundred thousand dollars, then they look at your run rate over, he was talking about six months, it's typically twelve months, they look over the prior year. Then they see your historical value, so in other words, if it's been climbing for the last three years. Your rates are gonna go up, but it's really not the medical claims, it's all the, uh, prescription plans, that's what's driving it, so it's only two things, unless you. Cut back on prescriptions and start, uh, just providing high deductible plans, that's the only way you're gonna do it. It's the only way.
Okay.
So. Yeah, yeah, I'd be more than happy to talk to him, but that's really the only way of doing it.
Yeah, we need to have that bullet.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the one advantage is, if it's not, uh, part of collective bargaining, which is not, we can really do what we want. We can say, okay, look, starting now, these are gonna be the plans that are off. That's the only way.
Then you, you have to care about how much risk, right, and how much cost you pass off to your employee, because it's a very competitive market. All of a sudden.
Yeah.
Then we, we go.
That's the other.
Regionally.
Yeah.
Then we're not allied, the, the, the health insurance offices here are very safe, they're, they're not. Over, you know, not very manner or employees, so it is, there is a cost share that is reasonable, there are some districts very close to here that are much more. Expensive.
Yeah, you can't make a decision in the vacuum, because you have to look at it holistically, okay, if you're gonna make the adjustments on medical, if you're not gonna. Sweeten other areas, you're just gonna drive people away, because, okay, well, maybe I won't get as big of an increase here, but they're covering more of my healthcare. And that's a bigger concern of mine, so that's. It's, it's not an easy.
I mean, I would say for the negotiation year next year, just make sure that we've got comparison, so that.
Yeah, so there was, uh, a teacher there, I forget her name. Um, who called out that, you know, if we pick a more expensive plan, their portion's more expensive too.
Right.
So there is this, you know, okay, pays out less benefits, that's bad for some people, but it does cost other people who aren't claiming as many benefits more. So it's, it's a trade-off, and, but we can't do anything this year, that, and that's important is to, to communicate, that's all.
And we don't deal with a blended rate, we, we, so if someone chooses a single, they're getting a single rate, someone chooses a family.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so there's no blended rate, and what I mean by blended rate is like, uh, half of our workforce is unionized. And the union goes by what they call blended rate, so it doesn't matter if you're choosing a single, a family, or a plus one. They all pay the same amount, they just look at what the whole, what the whole titty's gonna possibly, and divide it amongst the union workforce, and that's what they pay. No, people, well, well, if. You would have the younger employees subsidizing the older ones, because the older one for families would be paying less under a blended rate. And if I'm a single young coming, I'm actually subsidizing their premium, so. Um, I wouldn't be too happy with it if I was just starting out. And actually, some of the individuals on the union side are starting to push back now, some of the younger guys are starting to do that. The other thing is maybe offering different plans too, because, uh, we do have one plan that's, um, I think I mentioned this before, it's an elevated health. Where it kind of restricts, um. Their providers within the state of Hampshire. So in order for them to go outside of New Hampshire, they have to get referrals, or they're basically picking up the costs of their own. It's, it's still H M O, but it's a little less. It's not as expensive as a normal typical H B O, where you can just go see anybody in that way, this is a more restricted thing. Okay, but not for this year. Until, until we get the contract, I think you said the contract's done.
Yeah.
Next year, so.
Yeah.
So, unfortunately, if it makes anyone feel better, everybody's.
Yeah.
Has gone up, ours have gone up for the first time, double digits in about four years. So, we're not gonna be into it as well. Yeah, we're good, we'll just send that one. The way they work.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're happy with them?
Yeah. Yeah. You are, okay.
Um, is there a separate warrant article to change the name, the special education?
It's, it's within the warrant article.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Yeah. It's been blessed by legal.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
So the, um, we adjusted the revenue side. Um, but the expense side obviously has to be adjusted as well, the seventeen change.
So it's gonna be over six.
So the percentage increase now will be, because we didn't, we didn't reduce the expense side, we added the expense, reduced the revenue. Well, increase the revenue as well, so I'll say, you with me?
So percentage increase will look worse.
Yes.
To the public.
Yes.
But the tax impact will be far less.
Right. It's been time, I want to just explain why, yeah.
I think I have a mind now, um.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I'm happy that.
Dancing shoes.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that's helpful too is. Which is the path of least resistance, in other words, in, in certain instances, it's better to lead with the dollar amount as opposed to percentage. Because right away, some people will say, oh, I see fifteen percent, but it may only be like five thousand dollars. You know what I mean?
I agree, and it's, it's since over six sounds bad, but the dollar amount sounds better, and Amy will put in the difference between the draft and explain why there's that little difference, and. Think, understanding why it changed is.
Right.
Important.
Because sometimes people get amped up, it's like, oh my god, it's fifteen percent, but when you look at it, it's only costing, we do it all the time, when we put our tariff sheets out. We say, okay, customers getting rate increase, it's gonna be sixteen percent, but when they figure out what their monthly bill is, it's four bucks. So I'm freaking out about, but it's only four dollars, okay, maybe one less copy of Starbucks. Okay, it is what it is, so just. Do I keep going, what do I do?
Yeah, you can keep going, that'll be good.
So these, uh, is this, these numbers been updated yet?
Don't do the operating budget yet.
Oh, really, yes, we'll come back to that, let's do this one, these, these have been updated.
We'll go to.
Article three.
So we need to accept this, is that what you're asking? So, I'll make a motion.
Move it to the public hearing, I'll second.
All those in favor.
As presented.
As presented, article three.
And we're gonna check all these, the fifty we all like. We're just gonna check, it's an eighty, you know, like crazy fast.
Yeah, I did, those are already fixed.
Yeah, we're just gonna check more.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, do check.
Yeah, take a motion for article four, the special education fund.
Mr. Palmer changing the name?
You do have this one, George. Yeah, twenty-five to fifteen, I saw.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll sign.
All those in favor?
As presented, and you're happy it was.
As presented, sorry, thank you.
No, no, you're doing great, I'm just, I'm gonna, I just slap.
Article five, health and dental insurance fund. I'll make a motion as presented.
I'll sign.
All those in favor of accepting article five for presentation? Accepted as presented.
Who bees?
Article six, technology funds. Motion to accept as presented, I'll make a motion as presented. All those in favor? Passes.
Change the amount that the default is gonna, is not gonna be that. So. You can, you, it, you can move it forward and. With adjustments to be made to, to the default part of the public hearing.
You can take amended as discussed tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, the discussion, we have the number.
Cause I can't figure out the default.
So we'll, we'll do the operating in the, in the default, um, as amended, as amended, to be amended as discussed.
Yeah, that's good.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alex, welcome, a motion to accept article two, the operating budget as amended and presented tonight. I'll make a motion as presented.
Second, as discussed.
As discussed.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
It wasn't good with words, but. Excellent, no, thank you for that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll figure it all out, make sure it's right, and, uh, and have that for public hearing.
The, the spirit of the intention is to revise the budget based on the nomination tonight, as that is an expected position. To reduce the revenue, we will do that as discussed.
Yes.
And make sure, it's, it's hard to do those things, like, by as far as issue. It doesn't say ish.
Is, is this particular amount of, uh, additional cost would probably be in the default as well? Is that the, is that the calculation?
Yes, it's a little bit complicated based on like health insurance elections and whatnot, and because we're in default, we have to look at, at. That, but yes, for the most part, it will be.
Exactly.
But I, I, I can't get the exact number, and I definitely need to have the exact number for the default, so. I just want a little time to calculate it, but yes, for the most part. Um, so.
I think it's scheduled, there's a practice they.
So.
Couple days a week.
I know that the, um, that's the representative from the, from the budget committee who is here, I'm not sure. They want to address the board or not, um.
I'm Tracy in Afghanistan, I'm a representative of the. School board budget committee, um, we're, we've had a meeting, um, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, we're having another meeting. Next week, I don't know if you guys have that.
Yes, so yeah, we were just wanting to make sure that was confirmed, so that we make sure we get it posted, so that is definitely, okay, great.
And we discussed it at the meeting, so I think for the twentieth.
The twentieth.
Yeah, that's covered, but I'll double check with.
It's on the calendar, so, um, we just want to make sure we get, you know, that it's all posted, frankly, but we have plenty of time for that, so.
And I think we were gonna do that at the library as well.
At the Moher, and the Vils, Vilsheim.
And that's, like, committee for the town was pushed from the twenty-seventh to the third, so not the Wednesday, during Christmas week, it's the. Wednesday, that's the afternoon, yes. And then it will decide at that meeting if they're gonna have one on the tenth, or if they're gonna change the two-week schedule to the fall two.
So pricing, that's at the library on the twentieth of December, okay, what time?
Um, it could be next, did we say sixth of July?
Thank you.
So, is there gonna be back on the. Does the budget committee have any feedback for the board currently?
Um, I don't have any feedback, I'm just, here is a representative, just to still try and wrap our heads around everything, so.
Well, I think you learn our process, if you're, we're doodling here.
Yeah. So, but yeah, trying to figure it out and.
So there, it's not another board meeting between now and public hearing, um, so typically. What I've done is I've shared this presentation and some of the earlier presentations that had additional information. And then worked with the chair to, uh, make sure everything is in there for you, because it will become your presentation, so. Um, happy to, and I've done that with Sarah in the past, so happy to work with you, Pete, and I can.
Yeah.
Send you this presentation when it's done, when the warrant is all set, and then some of the earlier ones, because you might want to pull some slides, so. Yeah. Yeah. So if you want to, like, let me, you know, send me in by or something.
Yeah, let's figure out a date, it's gonna work, I'm on between the holidays, so.
Yeah. If you want, make you back, I'll be down, chime in if you.
Jump in.
Is there one presentation that's public that can be given to the. Moher and, um, budget committee?
This budget committee or the?
The, no, the town.
Oh, the town, the public hearings, when, when their presentation is ready, then that.
That'll be the one, okay, it's just passive. Actually.
Yeah, the ones that have been presented are on the website, so, okay, good.
Yeah. Oh wait, there's some conflict there, the tenth you said? Which, when's the poll?
The, the public hearing is the tenth.
Where's that? And the.
Here, that is here. Well. Yeah, um, the public hearing is usually in this room, and the deliberative is on the, yeah, the first room. There's less people that come to her public carriage.
Long time.
We did, that's right, we did do it.
Yeah.
Resource, resource, uh, the board to review applicants for the resource reconsideration committee. So in Trello, there was some, some candidates. Will apply, there were four candidates. Uh, it's not in Trello, rather, there's a shared drive, um, learning, learning resource reconsideration committee. Should be shared in Google Drive.
I sent an email this morning.
If you want, you can designate, uh, two board members to review the application to make recommendations to the full board.
I think that makes more sense than trying to.
Yeah, so, so for us, the process that we've been, you know, uh, using in other districts is, but. Accepting two people to kind of review the candidates and then make the recommendations to the board, so if you. You, every, it's been shared with everyone, so once you kind of sort out, you know, uh, like, and once you get permission, and then once you get access Google Drive. Um, you can take a look, there are four, uh, people are interested. And, uh, we always like people who put themselves out there in the, you know, public service. But, uh, you do have the, the right as a board to select the two that you want, and, uh. A subcommittee, in the extended practice, so if you want to get two volunteers to do that.
I would as well.
That, we'll make sure I have access to them, and because it is a formed subcommittee of the board, um, when you do meet, I'll have to be posted. As a subcommittee meeting, like, policy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, posted. Posted, do it here, and one of us will happily join you if needed, because we knew. We'll hold out two. Board adopt, we'll notify the two. Will appreciate the other. So. Action is to for us to read all of them, do we have the meeting of the committee and talk about it?
You two, yeah.
We do. And then I let Chelsea know when you're gonna come together and meet with folks to.
So twenty five hours advance, let me.
Okay.
Probably before, when it makes meetings for.
Yeah.
Few minutes.
Yeah, well, Mark, for the other board members is to review and provide feedback to our subcommittee members.
Uh, next up. Is to review policy J H as a first reading, and I'll go. Incoming policy expert, Ms. Lawrence to.
You guys are interested in this policy, I can tell, I'll see if I can find it and put it up there. J H. There you go.
So, um, this policy was simply missing the second and third page when it was previously approved in Mont Vernon and Amherst. So we are um, bringing it back to the board to revisit it as the full policy. Um, so that it can just be adopted as it was originally intended, it's just basically missing, it was missing language when it was adopted. Um, so this is the full policy, it was approved by Southvegan um, last year in in full. Um, and it was reviewed at the S A U board in fall, so when it, when we initially saw it, we saw the full version. Unfortunately, when it made our packet and when we reviewed it, it was missed pages, and so this is the full version. Kind of more of a housekeeping to make sure that we are aware that it was missing pages, and now it's not.
So can we can, can we just go ahead and accept it as as presented?
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, rather than this first reading, second reading, and all that. So I'll entertain a motion to accept policy J H. And it's absenteeism and truancy as presented in the packet with. The updated documentation.
We gotta waive all additional.
Correct.
And waving all.
To use this as a.
Yeah.
First and second reading of the document. And I'll make that motion.
One second. All fail. And motion passes. Policies as a first reading. In the policy packet, again, I'll defer to Ms. Lawrence if she would. And like this, the policies.
So these are the same policies that were presented at the S A U board meeting as a first read there. Um, this board has traditionally, um. Taken this as a second reading when it gets here, and we typically adopt them unless we have some reason enough to.
Questions or comments on the. Board on these. I'll entertain a motion to accept it as presented tonight as a second reading of the policy.
Second reading and adopt them?
And adopt.
Um, I'll make that motion. One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I I did skill lose, but it seemed like it was just a little bit of house school.
Yes, a lot of them were, a lot of them are house, housekeeping, yeah. Or required, but. Like it's already RSA, but.
Yeah. You weren't really on the agenda that I can see, Michael, unless I'm not looking at the right document again. But did you have an update that you wanted to, anything you wanted to walk through?
No.
You're a good spot, yeah. Next agenda item is a discussion on, you can't sure SAS.
I think that's, we removed that from the most current, we did, yeah, and in the board notes, we said we're gonna revisit it at a later date.
Okay.
This is it.
Number two, anybody? In in line and person, and Steve, does anybody got their hand up?
No.
On remote? Virtual?
No, no hands up, sir.
No, okay. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Okay, yeah, I have a non meeting after.
And one other thing that was on yours, and again, I apologize, I'm. Fancy tonight, I'm. Down this, but. It was on your updated, but we're gonna meet here. With Barker on the third.
Yes, if that's a.
Building committee. Search committee.
Yeah, send invitations to everybody the third and the tenth to serve your joint meetings.
I think you're, one's four, one's five.
Yeah, we can refresh, but I tried to send individual calendar reminds, but we can send an email with them. Okay, accepted, by God. So because we're all wondering, we're we're gonna post that as a board meeting, joint in board meeting with the facility committee. To vet that.
Yeah.
And the next one is right before meeting. Bullwings, thank you.
So. I just thought. The tenth is a public hearing, so. We're gonna make sure that we're.
Hundred percent. So it starts at four. Exactly the dates right here on my calendar. So on the third, it's five.
Yeah.
And I put in a, it's. Site tour, and then we're doing, um, we have to do our interview thing, you know?
Yeah.
Questions, yeah, that. And then on the tenth. It's four.
Okay. Which gives us pretty good time.
Yeah, and we don't have to do the same organization as the first meeting, we do questions. Rogers, and Roger's already working on a. Bag of questions. Bullwings?
Yep. Is that something that? We can have Tom add into his email blast letter, newsletter? To all parents, is that something we?
Yeah, we, I think we talked about that having a Zoom option for the community, because we're we're at with. There's a lot, there's not much room if we did more plus facility committee.
Yeah.
I mean, we may have moved for a couple, but if people really want to come, we'll have a Zoom option. Just like this, we'll record their presentation, I think so, definitely, because there's, um. Yeah, but there's a community where we probably should. Yeah, I'll make a Zoom option.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and at seven ten, I'll take a motion to. Go into non-public.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
That's it, second.
All those in favor, thank you for clarification.